Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Greater Rochester Chamber of Commerce City Council Candidates Night and Mayoral Forum. My name is TJ Jean of Portsmouth Regional Hospital, and I'm happy and proud to be serving as your moderator once again in this cycle. We are very pleased to present this forum to all of you here with us live tonight, as well as those watching at home on television. This will be replayed several times on Breeze Line between now and November 4th, which is election day. We really would like to thank Celeste Pley and Greg Shaw and the entire crew of the Rochester Government Channel for taping the forum this evening and having it available for rebroadcast. We'd also like to thank Breeze Line and Comcast for broadcasting tonight's forum on Channel 26 and Channel 22. We'd also like to thank the Rochester Post, Foster's Daily Democrat, and local media who are providing media coverage of tonight's forum. As always, we would like to thank the City of Rochester for use of the city council chambers as they do each and every year. We appreciate that very much. The chamber has a few upcoming events that I'd like to announce to all of you. First, we're going to start with the annual Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony, which will be held at Central Square in downtown Rochester on Friday, December 5th. That event will run from 5:30 PM to 6:30 PM. And then on Sunday, December 7th, we have the Christmas in Candyland Christmas Parade, which will begin at 4 o'clock and travel through downtown Rochester, displaying floats, marching bands, and a visit from Santa himself. For additional information on any of these events, please feel free to visit the Chamber of Commerce website at www.rochesternh.org. All right, I'd like to explain to all of you the format for this evening's forum. All candidates will be provided with two minutes for opening remarks. They will be speaking in reverse order of their wards, starting with Ward 6, going all the way to Ward 1. Those in uncontested races will speak first during the first round, and then we will have all of those in contested city council races come up for the second round. Candidates should remember to speak directly into the microphone when speaking and addressing the audience. Our official timekeeper once again is Lisa Stanley of Whitway Supply, who will control the timer that you see on the monitors to either side of the dais, so please keep an eye on that. When your time is up, your remarks are to be concluded immediately, so please pay close attention to the monitors. Remarks made by candidates are for the purpose of discussing themselves only; no personal attacks are allowed. Endorsement of other candidates or other attacks will also not be allowed or tolerated. Following the remarks of each of the candidates in all of the wards, questions will be asked of the candidates in contested races only. So for those of you who are here now in the uncontested races, you will have two minutes to introduce yourself, and then we'll have you step down. Again, please be mindful of the monitor for your time, so that you know how much time you have left. And questions for this evening's forum were prepared by the Chamber of Commerce, as well as those that were submitted in advance by members of the public. So next, I'd like to introduce to you those candidates who are uncontested that will be speaking. We have Ward 6, Seat A, Councillor Matthew Richardson; Ward 5, Seat B, who is unable to attend, but that's City Councillor Donald Hammond; Ward 4, Seat A, City Councillor David Walker; Ward 4, Seat B, City Councillor Chuck Credo; Ward 2, Seat B, City Councillor Les Horn; and Ward 1, Seat B, City Councillor Tim Fontno. All right, next, I'd like to have those who are uncontested give their opening remarks. We will start with Mr. Matt Richardson.
Okay. So I'm Matthew Richardson, longtime resident of Rochester, just finishing up my first term as a city councillor, really looking forward to my second term. I really appreciate the opportunity and the support the people in this community have given me, and hoping to do some good. And that is the end.
Short and brief, we appreciate it. Thank you, councillor. All right, next, we'll turn to City Councillor David Walker.
Good evening. My name is David Walker. I live on 34 Brock Street. I'm currently the City Councillor for Ward 4, and I am honored that I have the trust of the citizens of Ward 4 to go another term. Married to a wonderful woman of 42 years. I have four children, three grandchildren, and I'm a retired engineer from Pratt &amp; Whitney, 36 years. So I'm, like I said, I want to say thank you to all of my constituents in Ward 4 for giving me the trusting in me to be your representative. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Next, we'll hear from Ward 4, Seat B, City Councillor Chuck Credo.
Thank you, TJ. My name is Chuck Credo. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I, like everybody else here, am uncontested. This is my second year. A little bit about me. I grew up in Rochester, the last of five children, grew up right on Patton Street, Ward 4, where I still reside today. I moved back in 2022, and since then have started to engage with the community, and I'm back for my second term. I'm looking forward to it. I want to thank everybody for trusting me to be, you know, another one of the city councillors to represent a great ward. We did a lot of things over the last two years, and, you know, I really look forward to hopefully finishing up a few projects this term. One of those that I would really, really like to see happening is maybe the lawsuits with grandma be ending fairly soon. That would be amazing, because to be able to have the next steps with this city moving forward with those fairgrounds, it's something a lot of people have been talking about. It would be amazing to see those next steps coming forth as soon as that lawsuit is dropped. And that is it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, councillor. Next, we will move to Ward 2, Seat B, City Councillor Les Horn.
Good evening, everybody. It's a privilege to be up here. My wife and I, Sue, have been together for 57 years, and we live on Rochester Hill in Ward 2. I enjoy being on the council, and I see us as the City of Rochester is a beautiful city with a number of ways that we can become even better. You know, there's times when we sometimes want to go backwards and look what happened in the 60s, but we're never going to get backwards, we're going to go forward. And I think that we have a lot of positive ways that we can do that. By thinking positive, we can make things happen. One of the things I ask all of you to do is if you have an issue, if you have a problem or you have a question, call me or get on my website. It's on our city website, and I think it would be very important for you to go call us directly. We would work with you to answer your questions. One of the things that is kind of my motto, and I think we can all follow it, is that we're going to do, and I really want to do this, is to do the right thing at the right time for the right reasons. That's what we need to do here in Rochester, and we will continue to grow. Thank you very much. Thanks for the people that are here tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, councillor. All right, lastly, we will hear from Ward 1, Seat B, City Councillor Tim Fontno.
Thank you very much, TJ. My name's Tim Fontno, and I am running for reelection to represent Ward 1 here at the city council. Because I'm running unopposed this term, I would like to take my time to say thank you. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and all those involved with putting on this event. I want to thank the residents of Ward 1 for putting their trust and confidence in me to represent them at the council level, and let you know that I don't take that trust lightly. I also want to take a moment to thank Mayor Callahan for his leadership over the past four years. I want to thank the members, the current members of the city council that have worked so well together over this past term. It's been a real pleasure working with everyone. I also want to thank our entire city staff and all the volunteers that it takes to make all of this happen. In case you didn't realize it, it's a massive undertaking to keep a city the size of Rochester running smoothly. I also want to make sure I thank the school department. I sit here tonight because of the teachers at the East Rochester Elementary School, at Rochester Junior High, and Spalding High School, you know? And in closing, I really just want to thank everybody in Rochester that worked so hard to make this a great place to live. I look forward to working with the new mayor, the new council, and to many more years of living in this wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And thank you to all of you for giving your remarks this evening. I wish you all the very best. I know it's uncontested, but looking forward to having all of you on the city council again, starting in 2026. So thank you. At this time, we're going to do a really quick change. The chamber staff's going to come, set up some new name tags, and then we'll have the contested races coming to you in just a few minutes. Thank you. All right. Good evening and welcome back, everyone. We are now ready to have a discussion with those in contested races. So we will start with an introduction, and then they will go right into their two-minute opening remarks. And we will start with Ward 6, Seat B, incumbent councillor Kevin Sullivan.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Kevin Sullivan. I'm running for reelection to city council in Ward 6. I've been a Rochester resident with my wife and family for 20 years. I have two kids in the school system, one in the middle school, one at the high school. I spent my entire professional career as a civil servant in New Hampshire. I've worked for the fishing and department for 20 years, and before that, in Dering. I was 10 years as a police officer. I've taken an active part in Rochester's community. I've coached youth football and basketball, still coached basketball, was a scout leader, and have been a member of the Conservation Commission for more than 10 years. I ran two years ago with the goal of making functions of Rochester's government as open and transparent as possible in decision-making and use of taxpayer money. I believe I've delivered on that goal to increase transparency when I urged the city manager to change the policy on property purchases that clearly were not transparent. Now that's been changed. I know there's still room to improve that, and I want to continue to work with the council and the next mayor to make everything as transparent as can be for important spending and decisions. Second, I ran on continuing to promote businesses in the city. I've been proud to work with the council over the past two years to increase parking availability downtown, to bring new businesses in like Cinco's, and that finally the Phase 2 is going to open. And finally, if reelected, I'd like to continue to work on the two persistent challenges Rochester faces: affordable housing and our unhoused population. The cost of housing in Rochester has risen, and while the city's attracted multiple projects over the last two years, we need to make sure they continue to construction so we can see those benefits. And finally, for the unhoused community, I support the shelter being on county property, but I think we need to work with the county to see a cost estimate to make that a year-round facility. And we can bring that number back to the city and see if residents are willing to incur that cost to provide that service or not. So I'd appreciate your support this November.
Thank you, councillor. Next, we will hear from challenger, Ms. Amy Malone.
Hi. So my name's Amy Malone, and I'm running for Ward 6, Seat B. I have lived in Rochester for 26, 27 years now. I've been on the city council, I've been on school board, I'm a current state rep. I've decided to come back and run for the same reasons I've probably have always ran. This is the community that I raised my kids in. They went through the public school system. I work in public education. My foster kids went to these schools. I coached years and years of, basically ever since I moved to Rochester, I tried to get involved in whatever I thought had the biggest gap in it, and I'm very proud of those things. I'm very visible, whether that's a good or bad thing, at most public events, at the things, because I don't want, and I've never been the person that you need to call or email, like, "I'll have a conversation with you." The unhoused population, for anybody who knows me, I have worked with the unhoused population. I currently run the only organization out of Rochester that does strict straight outreach, homeless outreach. I'm in the encampments. I know the names of a good majority of the people that have to seek access at the Willand Warming Center currently, whose lives have been lost in the years that this county and this area have chosen to ignore those populations. And this is another reason why I came back. I watched the contract, the Willand Warming Center, this past year go unchecked by most of the city councillors that we currently had, and they need a voice, and I'm the person that has consistently been in the trenches with these people. And again, it's a big thing. We're only as great as our weakest link. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Next, we will hear from Ward 5 incumbent city councillor Alex DeJefois.
Thank you, TJ. I'm Alex DeJefois. I'm the current Ward 5, Seat A councillor. Thankfully, you don't have to have a spelling test or be able to know how to pronounce my name to be able to mark it on the ballot. So I've lived in Rochester for 12 or 13 years now. I currently work as a vice president of IT and analytics at a company named Agilix. Have a bachelor's in electrical engineering and an MBA, and I served for nine years as an infantry officer in the Army National Guard. I was appointed to the council in 2022 to fill a vacancy, and, you know, I applied because I've always had a call to service. I've always wanted to do what I can, and after years of working on my own professional development and growth, I wanted to be able to give back to a community that has given a lot to me. In my time on the council, I have built very strong relationships with staff, other councillors, with the mayor, the school board, school administration, and, you know, I think I've really established myself as a thoughtful, intelligent leader who can collaborate with everybody and get good results for the city. I support staff. I recognize that we have a wonderful group of professionals working for us, but we also need to provide oversight and accountability. And, but we have wonderful people working here, and I've done a lot to build strong relationships and be able to help them be as effective as possible in serving the City of Rochester. I am on, I'm running out of time. So I'll just say, in closing, my favorite part of this job is constituent service. I'm very accessible. Everyone reaches out to me, and I get their problems solved. I make sure everybody is heard, and I do work and resolve their issues. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Appreciate that. Next, we will hear from Ward 5, Seat A challenger, Ms. Susan Rice.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Susan Rice, and I've lived in New Hampshire my entire life, more than a decade right here in Rochester. My home is actually in the rural part of the city, but my business is right here in the heart of downtown. So I see every day how decisions downtown affect our neighborhoods and how neighborhoods share who we are as a community and as we are as people. I'm running for city council because I believe government should work for the people openly, honestly, and responsibly. My priorities are actually quite simple: transparency, accountability, fiscal responsibility, and promoting public trust. If I'm elected, I'll ask the questions out loud, not behind closed doors. I do speak up when something doesn't add up, and I'll always put the public first. Not politics, not special interests, and not backroom deals. I listen. When I have a busy day and I have people who stop me, I always find the time to listen to them, always. Rochester has a lot of heart. This is a community of people who do help each other. We do show up for each other, and we care about where we're headed. I believe when government operates transparently and listens to its citizens, we could build a city that works for everyone. We are not broken. We're a community that is growing, and it is thriving, and I want to continue that with strong neighborhoods, thriving businesses, and a future that we all can be proud of. Everyone has a piece of this pie. We all have common threads. It's how we weave them together and work together that makes this a strong and vibrant city. And often, if you have had the chance to speak with me, one of my favorite words is "community," and that is what I will intend to provide.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Next, we will hear from Ward 3, Seat A candidate, Mr. John LaRochelle.
I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event. I'm John LaRochelle. I've served several terms on the city council, two terms as mayor. I'm currently a police commissioner and a member of the State House. And so why am I doing all this? Well, I come from an unskilled, blue-collar, working background. My fate was going to be doing just that. But my dream was to be a scientist. My education here in Rochester and living in Rochester, graduating from Spalding and going to UNH enabled me to achieve my dream. I have a PhD in chemistry from Iowa State University, and I got to be a practicing scientist, my dream. But that dream was only enabled because of Rochester. And so the why is, I want to give back. This is my city. This is my home. I was born here, my parents were born here, and so I'm dedicated to service. I don't have any other agenda. I'm a fiscal conservative. When I was a DuPont, I used to write on little notepads, use minimum essential design. And I say, in government, provide essential services at minimum cost. How do you do that? I like to do research. You research the items. I do a cost-benefit analysis, then I set priorities. Then I go after the things that have the biggest bang for the buck, for the people. I'm in big favor of education. Education is more than just for the students, it's for the community. It's what helps brings good jobs here to Rochester, like Safran and Albany Techno Eve. So it's not just for the students. And of course, I want to lower taxes. I think, it's terrible, honestly, that people are struggling. I know my parents, with the car, they could raise me, but I see people struggling. We need to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. All right, next, we will hear from Ward 3, Seat A challenger, Mr. Benjamin Pratt.
Hello. I'm the son of a hero, a hero who fought for and served this country proudly. His name is Paul Pratt. My agenda is to make the sea more accessible for disabled veterans. That would be all.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Pratt, and thank your father for his service. That's wonderful. Next, we will move to Ward 3, Seat B incumbent councillor, councillor David Herman.
Thanks to everyone who has worked hard to put on in this forum. I am honored to run for city council representing Ward 3. I have been inspired by the city's spirit, diversity, and resilience. My motivation to serve comes from the belief of a strong community thrives when we work together and value every voice. My work career began in education, where I taught math in multiple countries and communities. These experiences broadened my understanding and appreciation of different cultures and perspectives, shaping my approach to leadership and collaboration. Later, I brought my skills to the Forest Service, serving as a computer analyst. In that role, I learned the importance of teamwork and problem-solving and effective communications, qualities I bring to work on the city council. Serving my community has always been part of my retirement. I volunteer with ARP Tax Aid, and I lead a spiritual discussion group at the county jail. And Rochester has been my home for nearly three decades, and I am proud to be part of the community. Caring for my garden teaches me patience, stewardship, and the importance of nurturing growth values I strive to bring to public service. Most recently, I've had the privilege of serving on the city council alongside fellow members to address local issues and champion new initiatives. My focus has been on expanding community engagement, supporting sustainable development, ensuring that Rochester remains a welcoming place for all. I am proud to be part of that progress, and I'm eager to continue this important work on behalf of Ward 3. As your city councillor representative, I will continue to listen, learn, and lead with honesty and integrity.
Thank you, councillor. Appreciate that. Next, we will hear from Ward 3, Seat B challenger, Ms. Christine Giannotti.
Thank you very much. I'd like to just thank all of you for being here tonight to hear what the candidates have to say. First, as you've just heard, my name is Christine Giannotti, and I have lived in Rochester for the last 25 years. I've been married to my husband, Tony, who surprised me by coming tonight, for 34 years, and together we raised, who are now three, adult children. Our son is 21, and our twin girls are 19. They went through the public school system, involved in sports and extracurricular activities. During that time, as an active parent, I also ran for a school board two times. And in running for this, campaigning for this seat in Ward 3, Seat B, I hope to be helpful in making transparency the new normal by being a council that is more, the community sees as approachable. A couple of ways that we can create that approachability is to conduct maybe quarterly town meetings where we gather together to answer questions that people have and just meet the needs of the community. Also, maybe sending out quarterly newsletters just to keep everybody updated as how things are progressing and different things that we're working on. And finally, if I am elected to this council, while learning as much as I can from my peers... And finally, if I am elected to this council while learning as much as I can from my peers, I will always act on what is best for this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next, we will move to the Ward Two, Seat A race, and we will start by hearing from incumbent counselor, Mr. Dan Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, TJ. My name is Dan Fitzpatrick, and I am the incumbent in Ward Seat Two A. So how did the career city manager end up on a city council? Uh, I, I came to this city in 2011 to be your city, your city manager. As a matter of fact, two of the people who were involved in that are sitting here, and a few of them are out in the audience. I retired in 2018 with no expectations that I would become a city council member. When Elaine Lauterborn moved into the chair seat four years ago, I think that, that was, she encouraged me to apply for her seat. And I was successful, and the city council appointed me to Ward Two, Seat A. I was unsuccessful in the, in the election that fall, but a couple of years ago, I was encouraged to run again, and I ran unopposed, and that's how I ended up here. I view being a city council member as a public service. Working alongside city council members for over 40 years, I've always respected this board, this, this group. What council members do and the sacrifice that they, that they make of their personal time is extraordinary, and I'm honored to be able to do that and offer over 40, over 40 years' experience as a public administrator in the local government level to the citizens of Ward Two and to the citizens of Rochester. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. Next, we will hear from Seat A challenger, Mr. Tom Poole.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and hello, everyone. My name is Tom Poole. I'm a lifelong resident and one of many generations of Rochester descendants from both sides of my family who have lived in and served this community for more than a century. I have a vested interest in the preservation and legacy of this city. My wife, Ward Two State Representative Denise Dee Dee Poole, and I have raised our adult daughter in the city we call home. I've served this community for more than 12 years, volunteering as a coach with the Rochester Allen Softball League and the Rochester Slammers, and as PTA president and PTA member. You may recognize me from the polling center, where I have served during every election nearly a decade, and currently serving as a selectman. My career started as a local Finnish carpenter. My current employer is Bridwell Incorporated, a nonprofit organization providing accommodations for adults with physical and developmental disabilities, as the assistant director of facilities for more than 20 years. I'm running for city council to represent Ward Two. I want to serve the community as a resident, a neighbor, and a friend, and I welcome your input and your concerns, and I would greatly appreciate your vote on Tuesday, November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. All right, next, we will transition to the Ward One, Seat A race, and we will start by hearing from candidate Debbie Thompson.
Hi. I'm Debbie Thompson, running for Ward One, and I have lived in this city for most of my life, since 1972, in second grade. I coached girls softball about 10 years at Rochester Allen, at the Roger Allen Park. I was a letter carrier in Rochester for many years, and I volunteered at cleanup days, and I really do want to do more of the cleanup days. I started my pest control company here 18 years ago, and I'm working on growing that. I'm a proud mother of one wonderful daughter and now a great son-in-law, and I'm thrilled to say that I'm a brand-new Grammy. I love Rochester. I want to do everything I can to keep it a great community. My goals for Rochester is to make Rochester grow smart and more affordable, and to see it grow in a way that residents and businesses can grow and thrive here. I would like to see more activities for the youth outside of the school and the rec department. I also think there should be some better communication between city and taxpayers. And I love to learn, so this is a great place for me to be right now. My pledge is that I will always be hardworking, and I will have taxpayers' best interest in my decisions. I will make more communication, and I will be honest, and I welcome any input that you may have. You can always email me. I'm Debbie Thompson, running for Ward One. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, appreciate that. And finally, we'll hear from Ward One, Seat A candidate, Mr. Raymond Wayman.
Thank you, TJ. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming tonight. My name is Ray Wayman. I'm running for represent, Ward One, in Rochester City Council. I grew up in a small town in Pennsylvania in a Christian home, where my parents taught me some pretty simple values: work hard, tell the truth, be grateful what you have, and do your part to make the world a better place. Those lessons stayed with me through 10 years of service in the United States Air Force and over 20 years serving our country in federal law enforcement with U.S. Customs and Border Protection, helping to protect our borders and hold companies accountable that try to cheat our country out of millions of unpaid tariffs. I retired from that career and now operate my own very successful e-commerce business. After a lifetime of public service and living in many different places, my wife Elizabeth and I intentionally chose Rochester to make it our home. I want to give back to the community that has welcomed us with open arms. If I'm elected, my priorities are straightforward. I want to make sure your tax dollars are used wisely. I want to keep supporting small businesses so downtown continues to grow into a place people want to visit. I want us to plan ahead, especially for big changes coming down the road, like when waste management eventually leaves the city. And above all, I want to listen to you, the taxpayers. I think government works best when it listens to the people it serves. I'm not a career politician. I'm a problem solver. I believe in taking action to solve problems, not just talking about them. Rochester is a great city with a lot of potential, with common sense leadership and a willingness to work together. I believe we can make it even better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wayman, and thank you to all of you for your wonderful welcoming opening remarks. All right, next, we will move to the question part of this. We'll start with questions and Ward Six, and we'll work down as well. And then, the second round, I'll start with Ward One, and we'll move up to Ward Six. Right now, we'll ask a question just to each specific ward, so we'll start with Ward Six. They'll have a question to answer, and then we'll move to Ward Five. They'll have a different question to answer, and then we might throw a couple in there that everyone has a shot to answer. Sound good? So, starting with Ward Six, Seat B, so Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Malone. The question is this: so, both of you hit a little bit on the cost of housing and some of the challenges with the unhoused population. So what specifically would you like to see the Rochester City Council do to tackle that issue, and how would you propose they do it? And we'll start with you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of going first. So I think, like I said, I'll hit the unhoused first. I mean, we've been working to, to make it a better situation for the unhoused community with the warming shelter. I think it's the right move to get it onto county property. It's not running. And I, I think that the burden that's been given to Rochester, Dover and Somersworth, being the only people to contribute to that, is probably not fair. I think moving forward, it sounds like it's going to be more evenly distributed across the county, so I think that's a good thing. Like I said, in my opening statement, I really would like to see us at least get estimates on what it's going to cost. If we're going to invest that amount of money to build that facility, we should look to see what it's going to cost to make it a year-round facility. That could be an exorbitant amount of money, but I think it's the right thing to do to bring that forward, you know, and let the citizens of Rochester decide if they want to spend that amount of money on that. So, I think that's the best way for the unhoused. We have other services in town. I think nonprofits can provide a much better service to the unhoused than the city can. For affordable housing, affordable is a relative term. I think most of the things built in the city have not been affordable to many. I think it's about diversity, having as many different types of housing as possible. So we should attract, you know, apartments, condos, duplexes, stuff like that, and not just focus on this affordable, one-size-fits-all, because, you know, what's affordable to me is not affordable to you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Malone?
Um, so, there's a few things. First of all, we need to stop kicking the can down the road every single year, hoping somebody's going to want a shelter in their backyard. Not going to happen. We've played this game for years and years and years. The Will and Warming Center is the closest thing that we've had to ongoing support since I've been here. We used to do all this work out of church, and that is a karate dojo with two toilets and one shower. Our numbers have increased to over 100 that access that. It is because the housing that is coming in is attracting people from out of the area and not the people within the area, because it's not affordable to the people in here, and it's not deeply affordable. We have zones that make it so more than three people that are not family members can't have rent an apartment, and landlords, all of those things are really none of the government's business, and we should start letting people define families the way they are and share their living spaces accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. All right, next, we will move to Ward Five, so Ms. Rice and Counselor DeJefois. And I'll start with Ms. Rice on this one. So recently, the city acquired property at Care Pharmacy, and that begs the question that we always hear is, should the city act as a realtor in facilitating development? So I'd like to get your thoughts on if you feel the council should purchase property in the hopes of redeveloping, or do you feel that that is something that should be left to the private sector? So we'll start with Ms. Rice.
Thank you for the question. The city purchased the Care Pharmacy property for $3.3 million. My personal opinion is, is that this was a backdoor deal with very little transparency. Now that we own the property, we need to figure out what we're going to do with it, and I believe that it's going to be a combination of retail, residential, and parking. We own the problem. In my opinion, it's a problem. I am very much a person that believes that the private market and the private developers and the private companies should be the ones that are the developers within the community. With that said, I also need to reveal that I spent most of my career working for planning and zoning boards, and I also worked on the other side of the table as a developer. And those are just my personal opinions on that. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Rice. Counselor DeJefois?
Thank you. I think it's important to recognize that Rochester is not unique in buying and selling property. Every municipality does it. It's not something that we do exclusively. I think the city probably could do a better job being transparent about why we do it and how we do it. We benefit a lot from grant funding and other things to do remediation that private developers can't do on their own, right? So if we buy a property, we can set the terms, and we can say, you're going to give us waterfront access, you're going to do X, Y, and Z, you're going to have X percentage of affordable units. We can set these conditions and then sell it. And if we sell it breakeven, maybe even at a loss sometimes using CDBG money or, or similar, that can, that is an investment. And the reality is that there are market failures. Care Pharmacy has been sitting vacant for years. The same is happening everywhere, and we can use this as a tool to revitalize our community.
Thank you, counselor. Appreciate that. Next, we will move to Ward Three, Seat B races, and this question, we'll start with Ms. Giannotti, deals with downtown revitalization. So the city has invested a lot in downtown revitalization. We see the Union Street parking lot being redone. We saw the move to increase public parking at the former Ben Franklin Building site. What would you say is your top priority if you were on the council for downtown revitalization that you'd like to see the council tackle?
Thanks for the question. I do see that the revitalization is happening, and I've seen the parking lots being dug up and putting in different things behind Revolution and things like that, and trying to make the area more attractive to people coming in to start businesses here. I have heard through the grapevine that they are going to be starting to put in parking that we have to pay for downtown, which I, in my opinion, is not the best thing to do, because I think it's going to actually take away from people wanting to go downtown. Right now, people can say, oh, we can go, we don't have to pay for parking, it's not going to be a limited timeframe that we're there, or we can go put money into the businesses that are actually coming into the town. If we have to worry about paying for parking and keeping up with the meters, people aren't going to be visiting, I don't think, just as much as they are now.
Thanks, Ms. Giannotti. Counselor Harmon?
I believe downtown, we need to maintain the historic nature of it. We need to go ahead and give some incentives to the landlords who are absentee landlords that are leaving their buildings set vacant. And I think the more shops you have that are working, the more business the adjacent shops get. So when you have one that's sitting vacant, people avoid downtown because they don't like vacant shops. Though, I think we can see what the merchants have and what they would like to bring in to have a shop near them. I think we need to have merchants input.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate that, counselor. Next, we will move to our Ward Three, Seat A race. We'll start with Mr. Pratt, and the question is this: what would be your top priority for the city if you were elected?
Make it accessible for disabled veterans, both that have homes and are homeless.
Perfect.
They are the heroes of this country.
Yes, excellent. Thank you so much. Mr. LaRochelle?
Thank you, TJ. My top priority's always been education, because I think that everything builds on it. But I also go to economic development. We've had Safran move in, remember that? That took a lot of work and what looked like secret negotiations, but they had to stay that way so we could keep our strategy under wraps. But at the end of the day, we were successful. We brought in a great French company to our city. It took a lot of work, but I'd like to see more economic development so we can shift the tax load off from the residents to industrial and commercial. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, next, we will move to Ward Two, Seat A. We'll start with Mr. Poole on this one. And let's dovetail off economic development. What exactly would you like to see in terms of businesses the city go after and recruit to bring into our community? What do you think is lacking?
I'd like to see more retail spaces with clothing and more, I'd like to see more stuff in the downtown that would bring more people in. We have a great deal of restaurants, and that's a wonderful thing. I love to go out to eat in Rochester, but I feel like that, that's mostly what we have. It would be nice to see and encourage other businesses to come into the downtown.
Perfect. Thank you.
My turn?
Your turn, counselor.
One, we got to make sure that Phase Two of the Ridge Marketplace is successful. Number two, we have to keep working on the Milton, the Milton Road area with Sig Sauer's manufacturing plant there has given that area a boost. We should keep concentrating on it, especially since we were able to bring sewer there several years ago. Keep working on the downtown. Every successful downtown has one thing in common: people living there. And we have to continue the focus on bringing affordable housing into the downtown core. And, uh, other than that, anything else that we can think of is fine by me.
Thank you, counselor. Appreciate that. All right, next, we'll move to our Ward One race, and let's pivot a little bit to arts and culture. As we sit here today, we hear the Stratford County Wind Symphony performing live up in the Rochester Opera House, which is always great. But talking about the Opera House and the role that the Opera House and arts and culture in general play in the revitalization of downtown, would you support further enhancements to the Opera House to make sure that it remains vibrant, or do you think... to the Opera House to make sure that it remains vibrant, or do you think that's something the city should not invest in? We'll start with Mr. Wayman.
Thank you, DJ. I love the arts. I love the Opera House. I'm a big supporter. We come here to a lot of shows, and I think art is an important thing in our culture. We can't just focus on the roads and, you know, everything else. We need to sprinkle in some things that people enjoy. And if we have good art shows here, we have good shows at the opera and other entertainment events, perhaps if we could develop the fairgrounds, we could attract outsiders to come to spend money in our city, and we will get a reputation that, oh, that's a great place to go for a show and the work they're doing downtown. So I'm 100% supporter that we really need more arts, and we should find ways to invest in art if the tax dollars allow it.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
Yes, hi. I do support the arts in Rochester and keeping Rochester downtown area beautiful, especially the Opera House. It's been here for such a long time. I go there a lot, and I think it's amazing that we have that. There's other cities that don't even have that, and we can say we do. Even doing some murals downtown, ones we do have, been really beautiful, but keep up going with that, and I do love the arts.
Thank you. All right, you guys did a great job with round one of the questions. Next question will be one that everyone can answer. We'll start with Ward One, and we'll move it all the way up to Ward Six. And we'll start with Mr. Wayman on this one. And the question is this: As you all know, Rochester has a tax cap in place. It's been in place for several years now. I would like to know your thoughts on the tax cap, and if you would ever envision voting for a budget that would override it, in what circumstances would you override?
Can I say a simple answer? Yes and no. That's it. The tax cap is an important management tool to keep our taxes regulated. We've been, over the last five years, under the tax cap every year for a cumulative total of about $14 million. So that's a good record. I'd like to keep that trend going. The only reason I see for going over a tax cap would be for a dire emergency, like we have a massive hurricane or something of that nature, and we really need the money from the community to mitigate this disaster. I don't see it happening on my watch. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do you repeat the question?
Question is, in regards to the tax cap we have here in Rochester, do you, would you ever vote on a budget that would override it, or what circumstance would you consider an override?
Definitely anything that is very important, any emergencies or things like that, would definitely see that as being something that we could override. Trying to think of anything that could be. You said that we could?
Could be. It could be anything.
Yeah, just anything that's emergency that we really need in the town is the only thing I could think that I would do.
Perfect. Thank you. Move to Mr. Pullen.
So yes, I support the tax cap, and no, I would not want to override it. Before I would want to override anything like that, I would certainly look for other departments to reach in and look to make cuts to avoid ever having to go out of that range that we've already decided is going to be our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I support the tax cap. Since I'm, I don't have a crystal ball, and I can't read the future, I can't tell you how I would vote on an issue in the, in the future. So I can't say I wouldn't override a tax cap because I don't know what we might be facing.
Thank you. Mr. Pratt.
I do support the tax cap.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I was mayor when they first instituted the tax cap in 2008, and we underspent it by, I think, $3 million. And every year I've been on council, we consistently underspent the tax cap. I actually like the tax cap. I didn't think I'd like it, but it provides some guidelines to city management to present a budget that meets the cap, and it actually makes the job easier for city councilors. Now, would I ever vote to exceed it? Yeah, certainly. If there was an emergency that required a big influx of money, I would step up. You just can't say no, you'd never do it. But yes, even though I didn't like it at first, I rather liked the tax cap.
Thank you, Councilor. Ms. LaRochelle. Next, we'll move to Ms. Gianotti.
Thank you. I do also agree with the tax cap. I think that it encourages families to stay here, encourages younger families to move in here, and maybe kids of ours that are thinking about leaving would look at other cities and see that things are a little bit better here in Rochester and decide to stay. The tax cap just encourages people to grow the community rather than relieve it and go support another community. And as far as voting to override it, barring some natural disaster, as everybody else has said, I would more than likely not ever do that because it takes away from the families' need, so.
Thank you.
Well, I support the tax cap. It's a great budgeting tool. There's things that are happening that are out of our control though, at the national level, at the state level. We're losing fundings from those sources. As we lose those fundings, we have going to face choices of, do we want the service? If we want the services that we have now, then we're going to have to go above that tax cap. We should only do it if we have to, but I don't see how you're going to budget things when you have the feds and the states cutting taxes, and we're going to... It's services that's going to have to be cut, and everybody wants that.
Thank you, Councilor. Appreciate that. Next, we'll move to Ms. Rice.
Thank you. Yes, I do support the city's tax cap because families in Rochester are already stretched thin. People deserve predictability and be able to plan and relief from constant increases. If there's ever a true emergency, like public safety, critical infrastructure, or state and federal mandates, yes, those would be logical reasons. Leaders owe it to the public to explain it clearly, justify every dollar, and make sure it's temporary. I won't support going over the tax cap for wasteful spending, but I will always be upfront about the needs we can't ignore. And at last night's city council meeting, there was some discussion about three different bridges within the community, and we've been fortunate that those haven't been catastrophic losses. They could have been. And just hypothetical, that could have been an instance where we might have had to override the tax cap. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor DeJefois.
Thank you. I appreciate the downward pressure that the tax cap puts on us to keep our budget responsible, but I also am concerned that that pressure builds up over time. It is... I think of it like getting a raise at work. If I, if my raise is at or below the level of inflation, my buying power goes down. If we continually keep the city's budget below inflation, the city's ability to meet our needs continues to go down over time, and eventually that's going to catch up with us. So I like the tax cap for its downward pressure, but I worry that it is going to put us into a hole, and then we're going to have to really climb ourselves, climb our way out of that hole down the road. I would never say that I never would. You know, obviously, there are things that come up. You can't, I don't think we want to paint ourselves in a corner by saying we would never override it. You have to leave that option on the table.
Thank you, Councilor. Ms. Malone.
So I do support the tax cap. It makes us work harder. It makes sure that we are doing more with less. And in a perfect world, some of these services wouldn't even be needed if they, we took care of them within our community and, but, you know, we have an unassigned fund balance. It's pretty decent sized, and so they're really, barring any really, really big, huge catastrophic disaster, should really be no reason why we go beyond that. And to others' points, we might not be able to provide some services. And when that happens, it's our job to be really transparent to all of you which services are going to get cut if we can't get that, and letting you speak to us about if this is the time to override it. And that's just, that's just the end of it. We all, as a community, need to decide if we would override it.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Councilor Sullivan.
Thank you very much. Well, it's good to hear that everybody's in support of it. It'd be kind of shocking if I said that I'm not, but I'm full supporter of the tax cap. You know, I think that's one of the best things about Rochester, you know, that I've liked on the city council, that we kind of have this set limit that we can hit. But I also think that we should try to stay under it. So I think that the current council and the mayor done a really good job of staying under that cap. You know, it's not something we should be trying to hit. We should try to just get what we need and not shoot for that goal. I also think that, as Alex mentioned, there is a, there is a chance to put ourselves too far behind. So we do have to kind of stay up with it. We can't be shooting for, you know, 20 million under. We got to be like right there. But if going over the tax cap, would I? If I put in the position where we absolutely had to, it's the only option, certainly. But I do think, I agree with Ms. Malone, we have enough unassigned fund balance like we did last night. We can find other solutions. You know, there's good minds on the council. With healthy discussion and people working together, we can try to stay under the cap and find a way to solve it.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you for that question. Our next question actually came from a member of the public, and we will ask it to everybody. And the question is as follows. I'll start with Ms. Malone, and we'll work down. The question reads, "If privately funded youth programs or associations were at risk of shutting down due to safety concerns, such as issues surrounding Roger Allen Park, what role, if any, do you believe the city should play in supporting or assisting these programs?" So we'll start with Ms. Malone.
Whew. As somebody, right, I've spent a lot of time at Roger Allen, and I kind of almost know how this is coming about. It is a private. It's, it's a private. It's, that's what it is. And again, kind of going on, and I get safety concerns, like there are things that the government can do when things are, right? We have zoning laws for safety, like we have safety measures in place for that. But we're not really, well, that's not our job. Now, if the city of Rochester would like to start funding youth sports, we'll talk about, we talk, right after the tax cap sort of discussion, that's an expense that we either do or don't want to work into our budget. We either want to be able to provide all of these opportunities for our youth, which does help them from becoming homeless in the future, just for the record. We've got to figure out where we want to spend our money, but private's private.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Councilor Sullivan.
Thank you. Yep, so this obviously is a coach of youth sports. This is something that's pretty important to me. I, I think that as the city continues to grow, which it's going to do, there's no stopping it, there's going to be more need for sports. I wish that Rochester had a facility like Roger Allen, you know, the same thing, but we don't. I don't know where we have space for it. I would like to see the city work more with Roger Allen, if that's what it needs to make that continue on. But it's more than just that, too. I know that I coach a basketball team, competitive basketball team for fifth and sixth graders, and we've practiced at the school gyms for the past couple of years, and that's not been a problem. But this year, that, that league is in jeopardy because the school system now wants to charge us $60 an hour to use the school gym. So I think if there's no opportunity, that's going to price people out. You know, we don't want to be pricing people out from those good opportunities to do that. So I think the city should work more to make sporting available. I'm not sure how you'd help, directly help Roger Allen, but I'd like to see him more involved.
Thank you, Councilor. Ms. Rice.
Thank you for the question. Roger Allen is a private facility. However, I'm not opposed to looking into and doing some research on public and private partnerships, which could benefit not only the existing programs that are there, but also the potential of increasing those services for our youth and perhaps well into our adulthood. There's, obviously, it's been proven that the more active you are, the healthier you stay. So it's something that I would, if it did come to that, I would do an awful lot of due diligence and to see about promoting a public-private partnership and potential sponsorships for that field. I did work in a community where we had something kind of similar to this, and they got very creative with trying to raise money from the various local businesses.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Councilor DeJefois.
Thank you. Yes, it's a private entity, and I agree with Amy Malone that, you know, private's private. But I don't think that means we have to just abandon these great assets that we have. And I'm not suggesting anyone is saying that, but I think because it's private, we probably shouldn't just be dumping boatloads of cash into them, right? But I do think that we can look at options for how the city can help to protect that asset as an investment in the city and the community. In-kind services, for example, things that don't necessarily have to explode our budget but can help them address their issues. And, and, you know, public-private partnerships, I think are a great idea, and I think we should explore those as well.
Thank you, Councilor. Ms. Gianotti.
Oh, as people have said, private is private. I am for small government, not government overreach, or government getting involved in private enterprises and businesses. My kids grew up right through the Roger Allen Park and played ball there for years and years. I felt like I lived there sometimes. But it is a private business, and they can do fundraising. There's different things they can do to raise funds for the center rather than going to government for assistance because I feel like once you go to government for assistance, you're kind of stuck with that, and you have no way to continue on as fully private. So that's my feeling on that.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilor Herman.
Well, if it's a private entity, it should be funded by the private sector. Now, I know the kids need someplace to play. I happen to live right next to a ballpark, which is only for adults. There are no kids from the neighborhood who play on that ballpark. And I should know we have a lot of kids in because there's three school buses that stop right next to my house, and I get almost 60 kids on there. And so we have a private park, which has no ability for the local kids to play on. Maybe they just want to watch or play video games.
Thank you, Councilor. All right, next we'll hear from Mr. Pratt.
Your question is?
So the question is, should the city get involved with helping to fund a private athletic association or a private athletic park?
I'm also not sure.
It's no problem. So let me, I'll ask it a different way. So should the city invest in sports for kids?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Ms. LaRochelle.
Yes, thank you. I'm not privy to the details of this, but I'm a big fan of sports and a way to keep young people from finding other activities that we don't appreciate. We have a recreation department that we support, and I don't pretend to have the answer. So the way I would want to approach this would be to form an ad hoc committee to study it and be creative and come back with potential solutions to city council, and then let city council, with input from the public, pick an answer.
Thank you. Go to Mr. Pullen.
Yes, that's a good question, and thank you. Roger Allen is a private association. A lot of us here have coached and have been a part of it. I don't know that they've asked for help. I don't know what the issues are right now. I would certainly want to form a committee if they were asking for help from us to find out what their needs are.
All right. Thank you. This is a two-part question. Who owns the fields and maintains the fields? And secondly, the other part is who runs the programs?
In most cities in the country, the field...
In most cities in the country, the fields are owned and operated by cities, towns and villages. We are fortunate to have Roger Allen Park. But, and it is incumbent on this city council to see, to see to it that the programs at Roger Allen or an equivalent continue in some form. But we should keep in mind, you have to talk about two things, fields and their maintenance, that the model throughout the country is those are city-run. Programs are private.
Thank you. We will go to Mr. Wayman.
Sorry about that. I've had 10 minutes to think about this and I haven't really come up with a good answer, other than what we've had. She'll have 11 minutes. Roger Allen, I understand, is a private park, but youth sports are an important part of any community. It teaches our youth teamwork and dedication and, you know, working together. So I support team sports and youth sports. The question I'll ask, and I'll ask this for everything I do if I'm your, your representative, is how much will it cost and how much are we willing to pay for it? If the taxpayers are willing to pay to do something like this, that's fine with me. Communicate that to me and I'll vote that way. If you don't want it, I'll vote the other way and not have it. It's up to the community to decide, how much are we willing to pay and what are we willing to do for our youth? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
Well, I practically lived at Roger Allen for many years. My daughter in sports, coaching and cleanup and all that stuff. So it is a hard question. What do you do, you know, like? But I wouldn't want to see it go away. Definitely not, because that's one of my things is I want there to be more things in the city for the youth. Take that away then, and that's a big one. So coming up with some type of meeting like Tom, group meeting like Tom talked about, to figure it out, that's what I'm for, because I wouldn't want to lose it.
Thank you. All right, let's lighten it up a little bit. Let's go with this question. I'll ask it to all of you. We'll start with Ms. Malone and we'll just do the U all the way around. So the question is this, give us a fun fact about yourself, something that's not already out in the questionnaires, something the public might know. What is a fun fact you'd want your voters to know about you?
Fun fact? I'm not sure how fun it is, but I'm number 12 out of 13 children and my biological father was born in 1909. My oldest sister is 91.
Wow.
Wow.
That is fun.
See, all right.
We're all quickly doing math now and trying to figure this all out. That's great. Thank you, Ms. Malone. Ms. Rice.
That one is gonna be hard to top, but I'm gonna share a little fun fact about a business that I own in Maine, that my, my husband and I have been involved with. We were customers of it for approximately 25 years before we had the opportunity to purchase it about 17 or 18 years ago, and that's Bartlett Yarns. And we're almost as old as the state of Maine. They beat us by six months. And I guess the other fun fact in the honor of a lifetime was that we had been selected to represent the state of Maine in the Made in America Product Showcase. And we actually spent two days in the White House and my booth, or my table, was directly underneath George Washington's portrait. So that was, that was a pretty cool thing. Once-in-a-lifetime honor to have that. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Giannotti.
Okay, I'm not sure how much fun this is for you, but I'm gonna give you a little riddle of my life. I have worked for the same company for almost 30 years and at the same time working for five different companies. So that is the phone company that I've worked for since 1996. And over the time I've been there, I've had three different jobs and it has been five different companies. So, but all the while keeping my, keeping my vacation and my pay, that's good, it's fine. But, you know, that's still under that umbrella of the phone company for the last 30 years. So here's my fun fact.
Thank you. Mr. Pratt.
My fun fact is I'm working on an interquel to Lord of the Rings.
Excellent, excellent.
And when it becomes public domain, I'm gonna take the rights and publish my book.
Excellent. That is great. Lord of the Rings, wonderful. Well, thank you for sharing that. That's great. Mr. Pullen.
So two things about me that I guess you could know is I miss the bowling alley in Rochester.
I think you know that makes two of us there, right? Okay.
I miss that. Maybe that's a business that should come back. And I, and I enjoy walking, my, I have three dogs that we walk almost every day at the, at the gonic trails, at the, over by the dump. So those are two things. I love to get out and exercise and I'm, and I do love bowling. It's Wednesday night and that's tonight, so I'm here missing my bowling instead of...
And I'll let the record show he's a heck of a bowler, so that's good. Mr. Wayman.
What could be more fun than stand-up comedy? If you use the interwebs and search Raymond Wayman, some YouTube videos may come up of some of my comedy bits and I, I only make, won't make any money off of it, but you might get four or five minutes of good laughter. And then you can vote for me on November 4th.
All right, Greg, did you hear that back there in the booth? Can we get some of that YouTube footage on?
I have to recharge for mine.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Thompson.
I was just saying to him that I don't really have any fun facts. I just work all the time, so it's like...
So you mentioned you own a pest control business?
Yes, I own a pest control company.
Most interesting job site you've arrived on and eradicated.
Okay, so there's fun facts about that. I have gone to a house where there was a deceased person there and they thought that it was caused by bees and we had to eradicate them. And it was not fun and it was, happened to be on Elm Street, so I always call it the nightmare on Elm Street job.
All right.
Yeah, I've been in the pest control business since 2002 and I finally decided to go in 2015 and get my entomologist degree. So I am that now.
Congratulations. That's great.
Thank you.
Counselor Fitzpatrick.
In the 1990s, the United States Department of Health was gonna sequence the DNA. Those who know me know I stutter. And I was part of that project. The United States Department of Health was trying to find the stuttering gene. So myself, oh, and they needed three generations in the same family who stuttered. So myself, my daughter and my mother swabbed our cheeks and sent it into the United States Department of Health. And they found the stuttering gene.
Wow.
And that gene were four generations because my, my mother got her, her speech impediment from her French father, James Edward Charbonneau. So that's my fun fact.
There you go. Well, thank you. I'm glad, I'm really glad we asked this question. I think this is gonna be great.
My first thought through my head was I dedicated my life to not having fun. But I do have what I think is an interesting fact. It turns out that I served as U.S. Infantry Support in an armored division in Germany. And I was stationed in Kreuzheim, Germany. My father is part of World War II, his name is on that board out front along with my uncles, also went through Krausheim. I got there by jet plane, but he got there by Utah Beach. But the interesting intersection was that he actually went through the town I was stationed and on his way through France and Luxembourg and through Germany. So I think that's an interesting fact.
That is, for sure. Thank you for sharing. Counselor Herman.
Well, an interesting fact is my wife and I, after I retired from the Forest Service, walked the Appalachian Trail.
Ooh.
So that's, but it's kind of interesting because I made sure my wife had her doctor approval to walk it and it was also her first overnight camping trip. So, but the doctor, I thought for sure would, would say no, but the doctor said, "Of course she can go, but you have to take good care of her."
Well, that's what I call jumping in headfirst on that one. That's great. Counselor Desjardins.
I'm gonna cheat. I have two. The first one is that I'm an identical mirror image twin and I, my brother is four minutes older and he will tell you that he's the evil one. And the other one is that I have designed, helped design and build something that has flown in space. I worked for Lockheed Martin and worked on a battery that flew as part of an instrument test, so it was fun.
That's great. Thank you. Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you. So if Alex can have two, then I'll take two. Mine are not, yeah, let's go three. Mine are not that interesting, though, so. One thing is I like to always keep learning, so over time I've taught myself to play the guitar, taught myself to knit, taught myself to sew. I've sewn friends of mine's children dresses. I think most people wouldn't know that I've done that. So I'm always trying to learn, so I'm sure that's always restored a '69 Camaro from a rust bucket to almost show quality and sold it, so I always like to learn. My other one is something else I learned. So as I was a police officer for 10 years, if anybody has been a police officer, you know that you have to go through a training and one of those is being sprayed with pepper spray, OC spray. So I was very nervous when I had to do that, first time I had to do it. And they, they tell you to look at that and they spray you right across the top of the brow and I just stood there. And that's when I learned that I'm not, OC spray does not affect me. So I've been sprayed twice and that doesn't do it. But I can guarantee you that tasing does.
Well, thank you for that. That was very enlightening on so many levels. So thank you, we appreciate that. All right, let's bring it back to some of the pressing questions of our community needs. And let's talk a little bit about public safety. And as we talk about public safety, we think of our police, our fire, Public Works, EMS Services. What priority do you think should be the top priority in public safety for the city council to address in the coming budget cycle? We'll start with you, Mr. Wayman.
When it comes to public safety, everything is a priority. So a top priority, I think we need to really support our police and make sure they have the funding and the staffing that's required to keep our community safe. When it comes to fire department, same thing, we need to have the staffing and the funding to make sure they have the equipment that they need. Because when we call either of these agencies, we want them to show up there well-equipped and do what we expect them to do. We often don't think about our police and firefighters actually being in action until we really need them. And when I call them, I want them to be there with the right equipment to save me. So I, I think, you know, properly funding them is, is the best thing.
All right, thank you. Ms. Thompson.
I guess ditto. So it's the same for me. I think police are very important. We need, we need them, we need to get some more of them. And the funding should be for them, so they have everything they need to keep our cities safe. And same with the fire department. We also need to make sure they have enough firefighters working there and have the funding that they need.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Pullen.
I would have to agree on the same thing. I would want to make sure we always had enough funding for our police and to make sure the right equipment for firefighters to protect them as well, so they can do their job coming to protect us and to always make sure that any of our civil servants had all the equipment that they needed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Let's take, let's take this, let's look at this a little different. Think about how cities and towns are formed. The most important service is water. If you, just think to yourself, if you're gonna settle, you're gonna, you're gonna settle water. Fire department needs water. Police and fire, of course, have a priority from the word "public safety" standpoint. But every city department contributes to the success of the police and the, the fire department. And that can't be thought of in isolation. The clerks in the finance department who make sure that the police and fire are paid, they're, they're just as important. It's, it's a whole. It's a, the entire organs, organization serves for that purpose.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Pratt.
Yes, sir.
Question is this, in terms of public safety, like the police and the fire department, what do you want to make sure they have to do their job and what would you make sure, as a city councilor, you would do to help them?
I'd make sure they would have a lot more knowledge equipped with.
That's a great answer. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Counselor LaRochelle.
So here's why I pull up my police commissioner badge. And so, obviously I have...
Been dying to use that all night.
So I have intimate association with the police and the command staff and it's not just about money. And they could use an extra couple of officers because I keep getting calls about people speeding and our police are very, very busy. One of the problems we have is we train them really well. They get a lot of training and we hire good people and then people poach them. So we have a hard time keeping our qualified officers. Then there's situations where we have very promotable people who make overtime, but then they won't take a promotion because they won't be eligible for overtime and they'll lose the money. So we need to address those issues that keep people from being promoted to their best value. Again, this, not just money, and I'd like to see a couple more officers to deal with those issues, but again, this is cost benefit.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate that. Ms. Giannotti.
Also, I believe that they need to be funded to, to the best of our ability to keep them funded. They ought to need to be offered incentives to stay. Continued education with the learning new practices to protect people better when they show up to accidents or fires, just different ways to get things done. And the equipment that they need should be readily available. They shouldn't have to want for anything. And I just think that they're the most important part of our, one of the most important parts of our community. If they aren't there, then, then who are we to look to? And I think that just keeping them properly funded and hiring more people to do the job and who want to actually stay and do the job for their community.
All right, thank you. Counselor Herman.
I think the most important thing we need to do is look at why people are disobeying our current laws. And we have, most of us in this room, I dare say, are guilty of that. So, you know, we need to get some way of getting people not to speed on our roads, to obey the speed limit. It's a very simple thing to do, but with the way cars are built these days, you hardly notice you are speeding. So it's, we need to do something so we avoid people breaking the law to begin with, because they want to avoid breaking the law. We have to make it so people want to do it of their own free will and that's extremely difficult.
Thank you, Counselor. Ms. Rice.
Thank you for the question. This question hits a little close to home because I have a lot of intimate knowledge about firefighting. My husband is a retired firefighter of 34 years, not including his service as a volunteer. I also had a sibling who was a firefighter, a female firefighter. And so when I say that this hits a little close to home, I will start with maybe one of the reasons why retention is hard is work-life balance. We have some of the highest divorce rates. The second is making sure that they have the proper safety equipment. We're forgetting two other things. We're forgetting the dispatchers, who are the ones that take the initial calls. That is a highly stressful position and profession. The last is the ambulance. And right now, the city of Rochester has a contract through Frisbee. I'm not quite sure when that contract comes up, but that is something that could be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Counselor Desjardins.
Thank you. Everyone has talked about funding. I, I think that we've actually done a pretty good job with funding our police department and as John LaRochelle mentioned, that the funding isn't everything. We also look, we have to look... that the funding isn't everything. We also look, we have to look at the reasons that people are getting poached away, why we have a, I think, higher call volume than Portsmouth, despite a smaller force. And we need to understand what we can do, and that's why I think working with, on the contracts for police unions, firefighters' union, the, working to make sure that they have those conditions that they need to be successful. You also asked about priorities. I didn't, I didn't hear too many of the people talk about what they think priorities should be, but I think school safety, my wife is a para. She recently went through active shooter training. I was with members of the police department. I think they do a good job of doing site assessments for the schools, but anything we can do to make sure that our schools are secure and safe is good for me.
Thank you, councillor. Ms. Malone?
Thank you. So I remember sitting on my first public safety committee when I was on council and I thought, like, this is it. This is where we meet with the chiefs and we, whatever. And we talked a lot about pothole stop signs and speeding and it was very anticlimactic, I will say. I looked at, at the time, it was councillor Lashapell and I'm like, how did I get on this, this committee? But I do agree that we do fund those positions well and it does go back to making sure that things like Public Works are funded appropriately, because if we have bad water, we have bad everything, right? If we have a fire department that, right, we don't want people to fight fires. We want people to help prevent them to begin with. I'd love to see that. I'll put some more in the preventative, the POP unit, for our police officers, so they're more friends, not friends, but so they want us not break the law. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Councilor Sullivan, take us home.
Oh, well, yes, I think everybody's, it's a lot of pressure, a lot of pressure, but I think everybody said good stuff. I mean, I agree with what a lot of people have said. I don't think it's about the funding. We've done a pretty good job of funding the police department. I think it's about the quality of life for our officers. So we do lose them. Sometimes they go into places where they're not paid as much. I think we really need to focus on that. And I think one way to do that is when Chief Boudreau gets that up to full staff, like this councillor has told him last year, you know, we can offer you those other positions. He's made it clear that they don't have enough positions, that they're undersized for that. That's a funding thing that we'd have to fund, but you know, I think we should do that. I think that doing, having more officers out there does put them out in the community, so I think it's easier. You know, if you see a police car, you see a police officer, you want to behave. Everybody hits the brake when you're driving, even if you're not speeding, right? I think we just need to work on the quality of life to get them to stay. We're pretty good at hiring them and then sending them away. So I think it's more about finding quality of life for police officers.
Thank you, councillor. All right, you have all done a wonderful job. That's going to conclude the forum for the contested races. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for first choosing to run for office and for those of you that are incumbents in office, thank you for your service and I wish all of you the very best on Election Day on November 4. We're gonna take a brief 10-minute recess and then we'll reconvene with the mayoral candidates at about 8:10. All right, thank you.
Good evening and welcome back, everybody. We're happy to continue now with our mayoral candidate forum. And for those of you who just joined us, my name is TJ Jean from Portsmouth Regional Hospital. I'll be serving as the moderator this evening for this forum. This is an opportunity for the public to hear from our mayoral candidates for the upcoming municipal election on Tuesday, November 4th. With us today are the four mayoral candidates on the ballot. They will make their order, they will make their remarks or opening remarks in the order in which they drew straws. So we will hear from Chuck Grassi first, Peter Lashapelle will go second, Doug Robbins will go third, and then Matt Mayberry will go fourth for the opening remarks. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening remarks. For the candidates here, you'll see the timer is on the board in front of you. Once again, we'd like to thank Lisa Stanley from Whiteway Supply for being our timekeeper for this forum. We greatly appreciate that. And again, we'd ask that you please conclude your remarks if the time does expire. You will hear the magic bell if not, you want to give it a ding. There it is, right there. So we ask that you please be cognizant of that. All right, so let's go ahead and dive right in. We'll start with our opening remarks and we'll hear first from Chuck Grassi.
Thank you, TJ. First of all, I'd like to thank the Rochester Government Channel for airing this and live streaming it. And secondly, the Chamber and particularly Laura Ring. This will be her last event that she has to do as she's going into retirement. So, thank you, Laura and the Chamber members. I'm Chuck Grassi. And the reason why I'm running for the mayor's position is that I've been a lifelong resident of the city of Rochester. I've been involved in a number of activities in the city. chaired the night before the Fourth, the Lilac Festival, a number of other programs, helped found the Rochester Childcare Center. I think I've been involved in things and as someone who has done positive things for the community, and I want to continue to do that. Brought up five children in the community and 18 grandchildren, many of them who are still in the area. And I want to see a better future for them and my great-grandchildren. I think that it's important that we communicate with the citizens. One of the basic reasons why I ran first time is I felt there was a disconnect between communications. People didn't understand what the city was doing. There wasn't transparency in a lot of things that were going on. I think things have been improving, but I think they have to get better. First thing I'll do with mayor is I'll challenge the city council to get involved with their constituencies. I want the city council committees to not just meet here in City Hall, but go into the community and see things, experience what people are living, to meet in the community. I want to take the council and meet at the fairgrounds, meet at Waste Management, meet at some of the schools, so that we get to see a different thing and we learn more about what's going on in our community. I think it's important. I will ask each member of the city council to talk with their constituents and bring issues back to the city council where we will openly discuss them. Everybody who brings a concern to the council should have their time, their hearing. It will either be sent to the city manager to be dealt with, or it will be sent to a committee to be dealt with. I plan, I'm the only one that's retired now, so I'll be a full-time mayor, have regular office hours, and be willing to meet with anybody to discuss anything before the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grassi. Mr. Lashapelle?
Well, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Pete Lashapelle, and I'm running to be your mayor. I was born and raised in Rochester, graduated from Spalding High School, and then Plymouth State College, now university, with a bachelor of science degree in business management. And I also have one grown son. I'm running for mayor because I want to give back to the city that I love and that I'm proud to call home. I believe government should be transparent, held accountable, and be fiscally responsible in how we spend taxpayer money. I want to continue to promote economic development at the Granite State Business Park, The Ridge, and beyond. Folks, there's other land available in this city, either privately owned or city-owned. And our economic development team is marketing this land, and they should continue to do that. And I applaud them for doing that. The more commercial and manufacturing businesses that we bring into the city will help spread that tax base out. I believe local government should focus on public safety, infrastructure, delivery of necessary services, and promoting an environment that not only attracts, but retains businesses. And I strongly believe we need to continue with our commitment of working together, not against one another. Be a leader, not another manager, right? Leaders have vision and want to know what the future's going to look like. Now, no one can predict that, but with the right mayor and council working together, we'll be in a much better position. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lashapelle. Mr. Mayberry?
I think I got the...
Oh, I'm sorry. You are correct. Mr. Robbins, my apologies.
That's all right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Doug Robbins, and I'm running for mayor of Rochester because I truly care about the community and want to help make it an even better place for all of us. I've lived here just shy of eight years, and I know our city has a lot of potential, but I also know that many people feel frustrated and disconnected from their local government. There's been a lot of secrecy, it appears lately, with more closed-door sessions and less transparency. And that's created a real sense of distrust amongst our citizens. I want to change that. I believe our city government should be open and honest with you, with decisions made in the light of the day, not behind closed doors. Don't, closed doors are good for the opera house, but, you know. One of the main, one of my priorities is I want to protect and preserve the fairgrounds. It could be a vital part of our community, and it could help the economy locally. And by simplifying the permit process, we can bring in more events and revenue without all the red tape and fighting for permits. I'm not a career politician. This is my first time doing anything like this. I'm still learning. I ask for your patience to bear with me as I grow into the politic world, the political world. What I do promise is to listen to the citizens, council, be transparent, and work as hard as I can with what I've got for assistance. Party lines mean nothing to me, whether it's Democrat, Republican, Independent. I'm a person for the people. And together... That buzzer means stop.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. We appreciate that. All right, finally, we'll hear from Mr. Mayberry.
Thank you, TJ. Good evening. I'm Matt Mayberry, Air Force veteran, CEO of the New Hampshire Home Builders Association, and member of the Rochester Economic Development Committee. Priority number one: we must lower property taxes. The recent assessments shook the trust many of our citizens have in city government. I'll work to rebuild that trust and fix the system. I'll fight to expand the low-income elderly exemption and fully fund the veterans' tax credit, because those who built and defended this community deserve our respect and relief. Rochester is New Hampshire's sixth-largest community. Moving forward, we'll take a clear vision and bold solutions. I want to turn the 195-acre Sky Haven Airport into a high-tech industrial park that bridges, that brings good-paying jobs and tax revenue to the city. While the fairgrounds are privately owned, imagine just for a moment complementing the Rochester Fair with a mid-sized concert venue that attracts visitors and energizes our downtown, all anchored and tied together by a Riverwalk. My campaign is about results, not rhetoric. I'll offer an action plan that addresses homelessness with compassion but accountability, a plan that supports students learning blue-collar trades, and fights for the 528 New Hampshire-Rochester families who work at the shipyard and are negatively affected by the government shutdown. Regarding our police, firefighters, and EMS, we owe you more than words. We owe you the resources, the respect, and the matching funds for your retirement plans. Low taxes are a result of low spending, so I'll ask the council to form a commission to review every position in city government, working with the city manager. They'll be tasked to provide recommendations to consolidate positions, eliminate open positions, and redeploy staff at critical needs. Everything is on the table. This election is not about heritage or lineage. It's about your wallet, your family, and your future here in the Lilac City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayberry. All right, that concludes our opening remarks. Let's jump right into the questions this evening. And we'll start with a question to Chuck, and then everyone's going to get an opportunity to answer the same questions. So the first question to Chuck is, during this election cycle, many of you have identified the tax burden on residents and businesses of Rochester as a priority and looking to address reducing that burden on them. How do you specifically propose to address budget cuts, if any, and how will you ensure any reduction in taxes does not defer future investment in public safety and infrastructure to future generations in the Lilac City?
I think that's very important, TJ. I think one of the things we have to look at is that our city runs relatively efficiently. You've been on the council, you've been mayor, you understand that. And I think anybody who has served on the council understands that our city has dedicated employees who work very hard, and we have a very efficient government in most cases. I think what we need to do is take a look at more innovative ways, maybe to delivering services. I think that it's important to take a look at it. If we're going to reduce taxes in the city, what we need to do is we need to adjust the balance in the tax base. That's gotten out of whack, where housing has become more of a greater value than industrial and commercial. There needs to be a balance there, and right now, that's out of balance. I think we need to take a look at successfully promoting more industry and business in the community, make the community more vibrant for younger families to come in, which will attract better jobs in the community as well. We are an old community, and we need to change that. I know one person mentioned the elderly tax exemption. It was back in the 1970s that I introduced that against a mayor who didn't want to do it in the city of Rochester, but we did it.
Thank you, Chuck.
Pete? Thank you, TJ. Chuck did kind of touch on it, is we need to spread that tax base out. I said that in my opening statements, right? And I think the city, I know when I was on the council and you were here, I think we've done a very good job in the past attracting. Do we need more? Oh, gosh, yeah, we do. We do. We do have two TIF districts. One, I think we have about two more years. Once that TIF bond is paid off, that tax revenue is going to go into the general fund. So that'll help. That'll shift a little bit of the burden. But, I mean, look at our price success. Sig Sauer, the casino, Pella, Safron, which I know you are intimately involved with, LDI. The list goes on and on, but we can't stop there. We still need to focus on getting more manufacturing, industrial, R&amp;D, high-tech, get more businesses here, and that'll help spread that tax base out.
Thank you, Pete. Matt?
The best friend that we could have for economic development here in Rochester is Boston Mayor Michelle Wu. The more she taxes them, the more they want to leave. So let's welcome them with open arms. I want to go after microchip manufacturing. I want to bring pharmaceutical manufacturing. If they're just over that border, bring them up here. And the best place to put them, Sky Haven Airport. 195 acres that pays zero taxes to the city of Rochester. Zero. It loses money every single year within the state of New Hampshire under the PDA. Why aren't we utilizing that? If you do a basic math, and I ran through AI, and I do think city government should embrace AI, we could generate close to $3 million of property taxes just by repurposing a lost leader that pays us nothing. It helps 60 millionaires with their private planes. Is that the highest and best use of that land? Let's go get them.
Thank you. Doug?
Okay, this is brutal here. Let's see. I'm going to ask you to repeat that question one more time.
You sure can, if you'd like.
Yeah, just slow it down for me, though.
You got it. You got it. So, many of you have identified the need to reduce the tax burden on residents and businesses in the community. How do you specifically propose to address budget cuts? And how will you ensure any reduction in taxes does not defer future investments in public safety and infrastructure to future generations in the Lilac City?
Well, taxes and budget cuts, obviously, we've got to see where wasteful spending is coming in into the city. Maybe I'm answering this incorrectly, but we've got to find where the wasteful spending is. I mean, every budget has some sort of spending that is wasteful and not good. Just garbage spending, I suppose, I could say. We have to look into that and see where that's coming from. I mean, I can't, I need to look more into that, I suppose. Got a lot of education to do, or educating to do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Find where wasteful spending is, I guess.
No, that's a very fair answer.
I mean, ultimately.
All right. Thanks, Doug. Appreciate it. All right, our next question, we'll address this one to Pete. And Pete, since we all know you're currently employed by Waste Management, let's talk a little trash. I've been waiting all night to use that one. No. But as you know, the city has been closely monitoring the day that eventually the Cherokee landfill will be at capacity and will no longer contribute tax revenue to the city at its current level. And the city has historically planned for this day by investing in the Economic Development Fund. My question is this: are you satisfied with the current level of the fund? And specifically, what would you propose as an offset to the loss of the revenue when the day inevitably comes to ensure that the taxpayers of Rochester aren't holding that bag of trash?
Well, first off, I believe the level right now is where it should be. They're going to contribute to that annually. I know right when I was leaving the council, I think that's when they introduced, or the year before, I don't quite remember. And the second part?
The second part is, what would you propose to offset the loss of tax revenue?
Well, you've got to remember, right? We have two TIF districts. Once those come off, those are going to definitely help with the burden of the lost host community fees, which are in excess of over $4 million right now per year.
Perfect. Thank you, Pete. Matt?
Absolutely. With the offset, let's try and find a way to work with Waste Management to expand their capacity. And I would also look at turning that into a giant energy park. It's time we bring back biomass, because the other day, I was with a friend and we talked to some Rochester farmers who would love to have biomass for their woodchips. Let's turn to, let's turn to, let's see if I can find my words first. An energy park with all things: micro power plants, wind, solar, biomass, to offset it, and let's send, let's sell power out into the state.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Doug?
My turn. Waste Management, as somebody did say, there was $4 million that they bring into the city annually. That's a lot of money, and it's going to be capped out in, what is it, like, less than 10 years from now, like, 2032, is it? I believe, I could be wrong on the date, but that's a lot of revenue to lose for the city. We need to build in small businesses, welcoming more businesses. Maybe not give builders such a big tax break when they want to come in here and build in the city. Not a 10-year tax break, but maybe two and a half, three-year, four-year tax break, because a big business that comes in to build in this city, they're paying less in taxes than what the normal resident of Rochester is paying for property taxes.
Perfect.
Maybe.
Thank you.
Sounds right.
Chuck?
It was my idea that brought the, that created the Economic Development Fund in the city council. I brought that motion forward to create this money separate from the regular budget so that what we would have is money to offset losses in taxes. And the way you did that, and the way the fund was set up to be, it was set up to invest in opportunities that the city may have to grow our commercial and industrial base. Because when you grow that commercial industrial base, you actually reduce the taxes on property owners. And I think that's what it was to do, is to protect us when Waste Management leaves in the mid-2030s, and hope maybe they can even expand and be here longer, they can, we'll be able to replace the loss of that revenue by an increase in our tax base. I think we have to be very careful when we talk about reuses at the facility there, because if you're talking about biomass, you're talking about other things, we have to be concerned about the environment as well. There are many studies that are saying that biomass may not be the way to go for the future of New Hampshire. We have to take a look at that because of pollutions and the problems that we have. We already have people that are concerned about pollutions at the facility, and I think that the facility is one of the best-run in the country.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All righty. Our next question is going to go to Matt. And this question, again, is to all of you, but in your research, as you've chosen to run for mayor, you may have noticed that recently, the school department has encountered a $1.3 million shortfall in their budget. And this was discovered after the budget was adopted by the city council in June, and it relates to adequacy funds that were cut by the state. It was further identified that those cuts were actually based on data that wasn't accurate going to the state. But my question to you is this: now comes the school department to the city council asking for 1.3 million. Do you approve this, or are you asking the school depart, are you approving the appropriation, or are you asking the school department to go back and find that within their approved
Last night, we had a great tutorial on this at the city council meeting, so we were able to get some great answers for you. I applaud the SAU for being transparent and taking ownership, because any time a mistake is made, such as years of reporting, when you own it, people will give you some credit and give you some space. I applaud the mayor and city council what they did last night by saying, "We're going to give you a line of credit until the end of the year. If you don't use it, or you get the money back from the state with the accurate reporting, great. If you do need it, you have up to this amount of dollars to use." So I very much applaud them and their fiscal responsibility for just not writing a check this morning for $900,000 and sending it over. Map it out, be there as a backstop, but I, again, applaud the SAU for owning the problem that they created.
Thank you.
And I would have supported that.
Perfect. Thank you. Doug?
The exact same thing. Mr. Mayberry said, I was here last night as well with him, and I think we're pretty close to all being on the same page with what happened there. So, I concur with what he said. Thank you.
Chuck?
Last night, I was at a presentation on childcare for working families and affordability of childcare for working families in Rochester area. But this is an issue which I've been actually working on myself for a number of weeks. Since this came out, in fact, I have a message from the Department of Education today that I received, saying that they're willing to work with the city to try to get some of that money back. This was caused because paperwork wasn't either filled out at all, or wasn't filled out correctly, last year. And they said that we had fewer children in poverty, and that's not the case at all. We have more children in poverty, and I think the department, going through their records and taking a look at families, are finding that out. The text message that I received this afternoon says that if we are able to provide the information that we can go before the Board of Education, we may be able to get those funds returned to us. So I approve of what we did, because I look at it more than saying, say, taxpayers' money. This is a letter of credit to help them get through this until we can figure it out and get it fixed.
Thank you. Pete?
Thank you, TJ. First off, yes, I would have supported that. I think as a line of credit, up to that amount, optimistic that the state will relook at this. relook at this and maybe reinstate some of that lost money. I'm not gonna point fingers. I think the interim superintendent did a great job explaining everything, because I did, I did watch that last night, after I got out of a Teams meeting, but, uh, again, yeah, I would have supported it. I think the council did a good job, and again, the interim superintendent did an excellent job explaining it in the shortfall, so, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Pete. All right, let's move on to our next question. This one's coming to you, Doug, and will be answered by everybody. And this is this, "The city Rochester has supported efforts to combat addiction and help provide recovery resources to our citizens. Recently, SOS Recovery Community Organization had developed plans to purchase property and locate on Hanson Street. As mayor, do you support SOS Recovery Community Organizations locating their operations office to provide these services in the heart of our downtown?"
You know what? Downtown has a lot of active drug addicts downtown. Um, a recovery center, I think, would be great. Everybody's gonna say, "Not my backyard." It's, unfortunately, I mean, it's where the SOS is looking to purchase that building, or, you know, the little building there, it's, I do support it, because if you can get one person to recover, two people to recover, they can be productive citizens of society, so I'm, I'm for the SOS doing the purchase of that building, I'm, I'm for that.
Perfect. Thank you. Well put. Chuck?
Thank you. I think this is an important question, because we do have a number of people in the Rochester area, and in Rochester, who deal with substance abuse. SOS has, you know, they've struggled, and, but dealing with substance abuse is a struggle in itself, and for both the, the people who are involved in it and, and the providers. They're not moving any more than a football field away from where they currently are. So I, I sort of looked at that when I saw it in the papers, and I said, "What, what is this, what is the issue here?" They're not moving that far away. What I would do as mayor is I would go and work with them, as I would work with all human service agencies and nonprofits in the city to try to address the problems if we can get together and work on things. If they're talking about needles in the streets, I would go to SOS and say, "Can you help us clean up?" If, we've got faith-based community in the city that can assist in a lot of this as well. Having them near the soup kitchen and some of the churches certainly is a benefit for their services, and I think by working together as a team, I think we can make them a stronger facility.
Great. Thank you. Pete?
Thank you, TJ. City government, in my opinion, can't solve every, every issue out there. We have to monitor this, yeah, we need to be somewhat intimately involved in some, a lot of situations, but we can't fund every issue. I think nonprofits, SOS, I do support it, and, you know, Hope on Haven Hill, there's a new one coming out there, I think it'll be up and running the end of this year, Dismis House, for women getting out of prison, to help rehab and to get back with their children. So the more nonprofits that we have working with the city in social services, the better off we're gonna be. So, yes, I do support having them downtown. We need it, and I know they had some issues, but I think they're working through it, and we, we need them.
Thank you, Pete. Matt?
The six most powerful words in the English language are, "I love you," and "I need help." It takes a lot of moral courage to say, "I need help, I'm facing an addiction." When we look at the SOS spot on Hanson Street, it may not be the best and highest and best use, but I do want to have recovery centers that are convenient, they're accessible, and they're available to the general public without unnecessary burdens. Again, is that Hanson Street location the highest and best use for a city that's looking to find dollars wherever they can, bring in more businesses, retail and small business across the way? As mayor, I would gather together SOS, our faith leaders across the board, and service providers to work ways of tackling this problem. I went out with this amazing woman, Christine Connor, and helped to clean up one of the homeless camps, and I'm sure we're gonna talk about the homeless soon.
Yes, thank you. All right, questions coming back to you now. Chuck? Question is this, "As you know, the city has been embroiled with the Rochester Agricultural and Mechanical Association, the Rochester Fair Association, for years. And over the last several years, the city has taken a position to strictly adhere to zoning requirements of this parcel, and have often objected to issuing permits that would allow the association to operate revenue generating events at the venue outside of the annual Granite State Fair. Should the city be a better partner with the Rochester Agricultural and Mechanical Association to allow events at the fairgrounds, or continue to deny permits for events outside of the annual fair?"
Thank you for that question, TJ. I spent a good part of a day sitting down with Mark Perry, who's the director of the fairgrounds, and one of the things that we discussed and we agreed on is that the lack of trust between the two parties. Rochester Fair has been in our community for a long time, they are the center of the community. Uh, what I would propose to do is, first of all, is to reduce the tension between the two parties by having this city manager direct the city attorney to, have the council get together to direct the city manager, to direct the city attorney, to basically put our lawsuits on hold, so that we can have time to get together and work things out, or even to dismiss the lawsuits, so that we can get back to square one. There's been a lot of things to figure out. They wanted to have a Renaissance Fair there, and they were told they couldn't do it because it wasn't grandfathered, and, and that's ridiculous. I would propose that I would set up a special committee of the two councilmen from that ward, a member from the fair association, the director preferably, myself, and maybe one or two other citizens to sit down with the planning director in the city, and come up with some new zoning laws to be able to get them to operate. They're a center of our community, they're an economic engine, we need to promote that.
Thank you. Pete?
Thank you, TJ. The fairgrounds, so much potential, right? Right in the heart of our city. Uh, I was on the council when there were some lawsuits going back and forth. I've been off the last two years, so I really don't know some of the non-public stuff, if you will, but zoning issues, i- if it comes down to public safety, then I have an issue with it. If it's just we have a hair across our, you know what, that we just don't wanna do that, it's not grandfathered, well, no, we gotta work through that. I think Chuck, and I don't agree with Chuck a lot, but well, sometimes I do. We, we gotta, you know, put this, this stuff aside and get back to the table, and, and look at this, because there's so much potential, untapped potential that we could do there, or they could do, and we could benefit, because we gotta remember, people are coming from all over to go to that fairgrounds, and guess what? They might, might want fair food or something, they may come to see what's above us, a gem, the Opera House. It, it goes on and on, so, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Matt?
You can't be a better partner if you're not even a partner to begin with. We've got to get both sides to exhale. Sit in front of cameras, I want them, I don't want them behind closed doors having this conversation. I want aired around this table with these cameras, with this audience. Let's get all the facts out there. It is privately owned entity by investors. They have earned and deserve a right to their own destiny. The city has some concerns, let's, what do you need and what do you need? Because I can imagine those grandstands turning into a small Meadowbrook that we have up in Guilford for concerts. I'd love to see a private park there, tied in with the Riverwalk coming from downtown. But again, it's privately owned, and I will, you know, no one can disagree with Chuck more than me, but on this, I agree with him. Direct this, direct the city attorney, stop.
Thank you. Doug?
Why are we constantly battling the fairgrounds? That's taxpayer money that is being wasted right there, if we're going back and forth to court to, you know, say yes or no to a permit, that's money that's lost, um, that the taxpayers are spending. It'd be nice to see the grandstands open up and, you know, do something every other weekend or something, uh, have car shows, have different, different things there, um, that'll bring revenue, as Mayberry said, to different, the revolution, the, you know, just a bunch of different restaurants, where we'll get the meal stacks and everything else like that, the prepared meal stacks, and, uh, end up making money off of the fairgrounds. I think, get rid of the red tape, I guess, and open up, let the fairgrounds do what the fairgrounds wanna do, uh, stop fighting them tooth and nail. I don't know the history totally behind it, but there's gotta be something in regards, you know, between Rochester and the fairgrounds that are keeping it going the way it's been going.
Thank you. All right, we're coming down to the wire. I think we get time for one more quick question, and then we'll jump into closing remarks. So during the council portion, many of you might have seen, we kind of did a fun fact. So let's do a fun fact with our mayoral candidates. Why don't you tell us something about yourself that we might not have already heard through your questionnaires that you've answered, or through any of the social media posts you've had? Give us a fun fact. We'll start with you, Chuck.
Well, thank you, thank you, TJ. Fun fact is, is that I played tuber in the high school band. My son, both my sons played tuber in the high school band as well, but one of the things that it led me to is to become involved in the arts in, in, in my life, and also in Rochester. I've been in a number of plays upstairs, mostly comedies, and I've also been, been continually doing things with music, so I want to be able to, I got grandchildren who would dance and music. Granddaughter was a hell of a sax player, and she's only in eighth grade, I think, right now, so, but the thing is, is I wanna promote more of that, because we need to do things that young families want in this city, and I think that I have that interest, and I wanna help spread that interest to other people in Rochester.
Perfect. Thank you. Pete?
Where do I begin? No, I'm kidding. Um, well, some of you might have known, after college, I moved to Sacramento. I was out there six years. Great time, best time of my life, but I knew eventually I was gonna migrate back home. This is my home, this is where my roots are, my mom and dad are here, my dad's passed now, love you. But I decided to ship all my stuff home, I didn't have much, just some clothes, and decided to drive across the country. So I took the southern route from Sacramento, went to Yosemite, down, spent a couple nights, but the fact that I wanna get at is, when I was about approximately 90 miles outside of Oklahoma City, I'm looking ahead, big black clouds, lightning, thunder, and I'm like, "Ooh, I'm in for a heck of a storm." I drove about a mile, I looked to my left, and what do I see? Tornado. And I quickly pulled over, so.
Matt?
God has blessed me with this Forrest Gump kind of life. It's, it's kinda neat. I've been on stage with Joan Rivers, I sang a duet with Whitney Houston, I auditioned for Wheel of Fortune, and I've been to all 234 towns in New Hampshire and every single state park. I think I have too much free time on my hands.
I love it.
In my, in my 30 seconds, I'm gonna take a little darker turn, because I think it's important to talk about it. We have lots of folks watching us. At one point in time, I needed mental health care. I had considered suicide at one point in time, for things I had to deal with. So, ladies and gentlemen, if you're at home watching this, you are not alone. If you've considered suicide, please, give us one more day. One more sunrise, please. I can get through it, you can too.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to take that little darker turn in it, but it's really important.
Yep, absolutely, I agree.
Break the stigma.
Doug, fun fact?
I'm just a boring guy. Um, I, I, I work during the day, I, uh, get motivational speeches for my daughter, um, go to work, and just a blue collar guy that's doing my, uh, doing what, my civic duties, I guess, I, just a boring guy. I mean, really, I am. I just work, I drive, uh, my wife's telling me to, you know, I drive, I, I don't know. Um, I'm really a boring guy, and it's 24 seconds, this is the longest minute ever.
Hey, it's, it's okay. You can say you're done, we're good.
She's gonna make you buy her dinner.
I gotta buy her dinner anyways, you know, but.
That's great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Doug, we appreciate it. All right, we're gonna do one more question. I'll actually start with Pete, and we'll go around the horn from there. It's hard to believe that time flies when you're having fun, I guess, but let's talk a little bit about your leadership style, each of you individually, and what you would bring to the city council. And specifically, we all know, in municipal government, it really takes coalescing a group of counselors to move an agenda forward. So all of your agendas, and all of your priorities, and all of your thoughts and ideas that you discussed this evening, really are predicated on your ability to get six of your colleagues to come along with you. So talk about your leadership style, talk about how you'd want to engage your colleagues on the city council in order to promote your vision for the city of Rochester. Pete?
Thank you, TJ, and, and you're right, right? Any one of us four up here is not gonna get our agenda, any, anything we want done without a majority vote. In some cases, two-thirds vote, depending on what we're voting on, right? My leadership style is, you know what, I wanna surround myself with people smarter than me, right? I'm gonna work smarter, not harder. I build rapport with people, I trust people, and it's, it's that one-on-one connection that you build. And being up here, and I did it for a few years, I know Mr. Grassi has, and I think Mr. Mayberry did it in Dover, it's not easy. You know, I, I thought I had a great idea, the first, my first, second year on the council, is let's have committees of a whole, because every time we brought something to, uh, whatever committee, we beat it up for two hours at the council meeting. And I said, "Well, let's avoid this, let's meet as a committee as a whole," but that got shot down, but, anyways, I digress.
Sounds good. Thanks, Pete. Matt?
Thank you, TJ. I think it starts with day one. If you offer a clear vision and bold solutions, you're directionally going where you want to go. Ask people for help, ask them of their opinion, be willing to say, "I was wrong." Be willing to move a little bit to get a better solution. When we work collaboratively, that's how we develop answers that last for a lifetime. I have some strong proposals, someone he and I do not get along with, but he said to me, "Think about this for a second," and it moved my mind. I wanna look for, search out best practices, because other people around the country have done these things. We're not the only ones, we're not alone in this. I would refine the answers, I would listen more, and I would ask questions. One of the biggest complaints we have from the audience to office holders are, "You're not asking the hard questions, you're not asking the tough questions. Go where others don't, because someone out there watching wants that answer."
All right. Thank you, Matt. Doug?
I'm thinking common ground. Um, we, we need to find common ground amongst myself, anybody here in the council, and build off of the common ground. To make something happen, to make everything work, we, we all have to align, and we all have to have the same beliefs, for the most part, for everything to work, I, you know, I mean, that's what I feel.
Nope, that's a very good answer to that. Good?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Chuck?
Good question, TJ, thank you. My degree is in management and leadership. I've built a number of nonprofit boards. I was executive director and chairman of the board of the New Hampshire Youth Leadership Foundation. So I understand what leadership is, and I think what it is, is it's team building, more than anything else, putting people in the right positions to be successful. I would look at all the council members and seek what their strength is, and put them into positions where they can best utilize that to meet the needs of the citizens of Rochester. Working together as a team to get things done, bringing citizens in to work with us, working with department heads to, to solve the problems with the city as a team. I'm not here, I'm not making any promises, I'm not directing any people to do things. What I want our vision to be is not my vision, but to be our vision, a vision for what's better for the city of Rochester. We can only do that by building a successful and productive team.
Perfect. Thank you, Chuck. All right, I could ask questions all night long, but, you know, these people, it's getting late, so we're gonna have to start jumping into our closing remarks now. And just a reminder, we'll do our closing remarks in reverse order of the opening remarks, and each candidate will have two minutes to address their comments, their closing remarks to the audience, and we will start with Matt.
Thank you, TJ, thanks for doing this this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time this evening. Thank you, TJ. Thanks for doing this this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time this evening. I know you gave up both Wheel of Fortune and Jeopardy just to watch us. So again, thank you and go get a life. God, the game shows are fun. Mr. Rogers is famous for saying, "Look for the helpers." And friends, that's all I want to do. I want to help Rochester get to the next level affordably. I know I can make a difference for your family. I know what it's like to work hard and sometimes not have those financial ends meet, but we keep trying. We get up and keep going. Tonight, we talked about some big ideas and bold initiatives. The challenges before us aren't too big. It's just that sometimes we think too small. In New Hampshire, we do big things well. So far, my campaign has been to 4,800 doors with a goal of visiting 6,000 homes. Asking for your support. I give out my cell number all the time, 603-969-7077, including to the person who called me at 2:45 one morning. I took the call. And you can call anytime, just not at 2:45 again, please, and ask your questions. As your mayor, I'll do town halls both in person and on Facebook. Tomorrow is my fourth town hall, engaging with you one-on-one, two via Zoom, two in person. You'll see me, but more importantly, friends, I see you and how hard you're working for your families. I believe in term limits. I pledge not to run for more than two terms. I don't need 20 years to get something done. I promise. Let's cut spending whenever possible, invest money when it makes sense, and treat others with compassion, but expect accountability and results. It's only fair. I start each day by asking God to help me be 1% better than I was yesterday. I'm not perfect, but I'll work hard for you and I won't let you down. Follow me on Facebook at Matt Mayberry for NH. Thank you again and good night.
Thank you, Matt. Doug?
Closing remarks. All right. I'm not a career politician. I'm not a politician. Forget the career, okay? I'm a career truck driver, I suppose, or machine operator. I'm learning, okay? I know that Rochester would give me...
Speak right into the microphone, Doug, so they can hear you at home.
I know Rochester would give me the city staff, you know, to work with me, to help me learn and figure everything out. I want to find out what is going on with the properties that are being purchased with the tax money, with our tax money. I am just a regular citizen. I am just, I am you. That's it. I ask for patience, you know? Am I not in the microphone? I ask for patience. I promise to listen. I promise to be as transparent as anything, as I'm being as transparent as saying, "I don't know what the heck I'm saying right now, but I know what I'm saying." But the words just ain't coming out right because cameras, everybody, it's just nerve-wracking slightly. This is my first time doing such a thing and together, we can work together. I'll listen to his, he is, I'm not looking to... I'm looking to learn, okay? That's what I'm looking to do, is looking to learn the politics. And I know that Rochester, the mayor, is not the top, top. So therefore, I'm working to hope that we can work together and... Thanks. But listen, I don't...
Thank you, Doug. That's great. Pete?
Thank you, TJ. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here before you this evening with a heart full of gratitude, optimism, and a mind set for the future. Our city, like many others, has faced its share of challenges. But through it all, we have remained resilient, united, and steadfast in our commitment to one another. As I look at the faces gathered here tonight and the many that I've met during this journey, I see hard-working families that want to do better for their children. I've seen and met small business owners that pour their heart and soul into their business. Educators and public servants who donate their lives to help serving others. It is this spirit of community that I want to carry with me as your mayor. I believe government works best when it works hand-in-hand with the people it serves. When it listens to your concerns, your ideas, and your aspirations. When it fights for your interests and ensures that every voice is heard. That is the kind of leadership that I will make a promise, that I promise that I will bring to the table. Leadership that is accountable, transparent, and responsive to the needs of this city, and this city only. Leadership that brings people together rather than dividing them. Leadership that focuses on solutions, not just problems. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for listening. I appreciate your support. And please vote on November 4th. Good night.
Thank you, Pete. Chuck?
One of the most important things that most people talk about when they come to the city of Rochester, new families move here, is they're amazed at the vibrancy of the volunteerism that we have in our community. That's very important because that's how we're going to meet the challenges of the future. The volunteers are the people who work hard to try to make things better in their community. And it's not just members of the city council or our staff here in the city, but it's people who are out there picking up trash on weekends, people who volunteer to soup kitchens, people that are in the faith-based community and they help the homeless. We need to better organize those efforts and support those efforts in the city so that we can deliver our services more efficiently to people and more passionately to people, compassionately to people here in our city. We have a number of issues, problems that we have to deal with, as all communities have. I think working with the communities, working with the business community in downtown to address speeding. Biggest complaint I hear from people downtown, from the business downtown, is speeding. I have the experience, the knowledge, and the compassion to lead the city council. People say I'm a career politician because I've been doing this voluntarily for the last 50 years. I don't look at it as a career politician at all. I look to somebody who cares for their community and somebody who wants to volunteer, and I find this is my way to volunteer. I think it's important that we bring everybody together to help solve things. I had a large tax increase this year as well on my property. And I think there are ways we can address that. I was talking with one of the members, a person who's running for city council, had a new idea of how we should do things, and it's workable. I'm not gonna make promises that I can't deliver on. And I'm not gonna sit here and say that I have all the ideas because you have the ideas. And I will look to you to help solve those problems. And that's why I am asking for your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. All right. Let's give a big round of applause to all four of our candidates, please. I certainly want to thank Chuck Grassi, Pete Lachapelle, Matt Mayberry, and Doug Robbins, first and foremost, for stepping up and having the courage to run for this office. I can tell you from experience, it's probably one of the most rewarding experiences you could ever have if you are lucky enough to obtain the position. And I thank you for your willingness to step up. Before we leave this evening, I do want to just thank all of the candidates that participated this evening, including those on the city council. I'd like to thank the city of Rochester for letting us use the council chamber as always. We greatly appreciate that. I want to thank Celeste Playa and Greg Shaw for the great work, especially Greg at the controls, making sure everything ran smooth. Great to be back with you again, my friend. I'd like to thank Breeze Line and Comcast for broadcasting this forum. I would also like to thank the Rochester Post, Foster's Daily Democrat, and local media that are providing coverage of the candidates' forum this evening. I'd like to thank all of our volunteers for their assistance in putting this forum together, including all of the staff at the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to thank those who submitted questions prior to tonight's events. And we also want to thank all of you in the audience for attending this evening as well. And before we conclude, I would be remiss if I did not wish and thank Laura Ring a wonderful thank you for her work in this event, but in all of the events that she has fostered through with the Greater Rochester Chamber of Commerce. I know, I know. But I am not gonna have the opportunity to have a public microphone like this to be able to convey it. But I think this city owes her an extreme debt of gratitude in her dedication and her unwavering commitment to the growth of large and small businesses in the greater Rochester area, and we will certainly be a better community for it. So thanks again, Laura. We appreciate it. All right. And lastly, and most importantly, I encourage all of you to get out to vote at the municipal election on Tuesday, November 4th. On behalf of the Greater Rochester Chamber of Commerce, I'm TJ Jean. Good night.